I just didn't know.
Yeah, no, I did write a file about it, but it's probably been a long time.
Here, all right. Did Larry make it back? Larry was over in the office.
An hour.
He said, yeah, when he came in. He's written a whole set of changes to the document. And he came in, handed it to me. Said he had, he was gonna hand it out.
That's on. So I need to know who's on it. Are you coming to that? Great, okay.
I didn't wanna try to.
Just to make sure.
Well, you know, one has been wanting to put together a youth council. It may be a little, a little too cute for the youth council, but.
I didn't get any other resources.
Hey, down up with me. Say some Muriel. Uh, well, it's just the order of want to. And that's largely based on the order, which I ended up writing the incentive to her. There's really no intention behind it. I would say on this one, we did discuss, because Doug and three things that were kind of related. So now we can put those together and keep discussion going. But normally I have to. Well, I was.
Here, Larry, it's recording, just so you know it's.
I just wanted, the reason I asked you, if I'm going out of order, but if you're not here.
Okay, let's follow meeting in order. Uh, this is the work session for Belavista City Council, February 20, 2023. Uh, first item is review of the minutes from January 2024. If anybody have any comments or anything, you can take your time and read them before, uh, the final meeting. Okay. Next item is ordinance A, amending chapter 105 flood damage prevention of the Coda ordinances the city of Belavista could provide for planning commission consideration of waivers and certain requirements and for other purposes. Uh, Taylor, did you wanna give a little background on that?
Sure. Um, this is a house, you know, related to some house P B in our current development ordinance. Currently state statutes require that anything that's on zoning variance be. Said for zoning adjustment, we said planning commission. So that way it's more in line with state statutes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? So to clean up, to try and make things consistent with state statute. Uh, B is an ordinance amending Belavista zoning ordinance and map the rezone county parcel number sixteen dash one six nine two six zero zero zero, sixteen dash one six nine two seven dash zero 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 from R one residential single family district to P one conservation district. Uh, Taylor, did you wanna say anything about this?
This is a, the first step of a development that the staff and trailblazers have been working on. Um, there is a proposal or future proposal in the works right now to put a trailhead right here for the blowing springs, um, to Metfield extension, the green lane that goes through there. It's going to end right here in one of these two lots. However, the first step is to rezone these where the P one to match the zoning around it. Uh, if you see in your packets on page 29 on the staff report, um, you'll see that those two lots are currently sitting within a sea of P one. However, due to the grade, the extreme steep topo in this area, which P one is intended for, um, the lots are not perfectly aligned to where the parking lot can go in the middle. And so the parking lot is gonna have to go, um, to the left and basically traverse all three lots. So to clean that up, we're gonna make all the zoning the same, so long as you guys, you know, approve that. And then a lot split or incidental subdivision to remove the property lines and adjoin those two lots in a common property. So that way there's not two yellow blotches of color whenever we remove the, um, property lines, and that way it's more consistent.
So the point, uh, there's in the day is that it's, it's trail and there's gonna be parking there. It's basically end of the extension, current end of the extension of the.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we just don't want two yellow colors in the middle of a big giant sea of green when those property lines disappear. So just.
Is it fair to say the zoning that's currently there looks a little spotty? Does that make sense?
There'd been a giant sea of green, that's for sure.
Would it bring it into consistency with the neighboring property? Is that part of it as well?
It would also bring it into consistency with, um, our typical trailhead development. All of our trailhead developments are on P one zones on a common property. Um, typically you don't want a parking lot on an R one single family lot, so, um, the use.
The reason, the reason I ask you that is, is, you know, this one is no different, but we normally don't look at development in terms of what the zoning is gonna be, but, anyway.
Third question is in line with the intent of the typical use for her.
Any questions on that one? Okay. Item C is an ordinance amending Belavista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2023 dash five two eight two one, uh, county parcel number sixteen dash three seven four four two zero 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 from P one conservation district to R one residential single family district. You wanna elaborate on that?
Yeah, this is another plated lot that was plated prior to city establishment that was intended to be used for a single family detached structure. However, at some point, um, when the zoning map was created and adopted, this one lot out of the entire subdivision was zoned as P one conservation. Um, typically, again, as I noted with the other one, P one's normally intended for steep slopes, so things that are hard to develop residences on. Um, the applicant has proven that this lot is more than buildable. They already have the perk test, everything's ready to go. We just can't review the building permit because it's not zoned correctly. Um, the zoning is in line with obviously all the other R one or the yellow lots around there on page thirty eight of your packet. Um, it does meet the standard R one single family lot in this area.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, next one is D, ordinance amending Belavista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2023 dash five two seven nine four, county parcel number sixteen dash four oh two two four zero 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 from R two residential district to C one neighborhood commercial district.
So we have a request that's in, uh, much in our, within our future land use plan, um, our comprehensive plan, and thus our future land use policy plan shows that this area will be commercial or mixed, mixed abuses with retail, um, included. And so staff believes that this request meets, um, has all of the requirements for commercial development in this area, and it's adjacent to already commercial, um, property. And there's already a non-residential use on it established on the land, the sister Cooper Chapel, um, if you're familiar with it, where the, um, glass chapel is. And so we are requesting, or the applicant's requesting we get that more aligned with its current use and also meet the intent of the future land use plan.
So that's right near Cooper Chapel. Any questions there? Okay. Next one is, uh, item E, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances the city of Belavista to adopt a new article ten outdoor lighting to chapter one oh nine zoning to provide for outdoor lighting rights for new commercial developments and for other purposes. And, uh, uh, Craig, do you wanna say anything about this?
The lighting?
Do you wanna have Taylor do it?
Uh, well, I thought she'd kick it off.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, this is an entirely new development ordinance that our current, uh, zoning or development use, um, development of code does not have. We are one of the few cities, or one of the, at least the only city of the top five, um, that do not have any kind of outdoor lighting standards for development. Um, so lights can be pointed which way they can be pointed at, they can be pointed out. Um, and so due to the increase in development, um, staff and councilman Hontle believe that it is pertinent to get something in place. This is a pretty basic ordinance, so it's pretty similar to Bentonville and Fayetteville's, um, a mix of between the two, uh, personalized for Belavista. Our future land use plan and our comprehensive plan, um, also call out for a type of development standard like this, um, because we are a natural city. Our comprehensive plan calls out many times that we need to get some ordinances in place to protect the natural aspects of Belavista and dark sky being one of those, or the natural beautiful starry sky, uh, whichever way that you like to look at it. But essentially, this proposal would go in the zoning code, and it would just require developers that are not single family homes or duplexes to point and shield their lights down, especially when they're adjacent to residential areas like all of the C ones. That way we don't have outdoor parking lights or lights on the walls just pointing in someone's backyard and their, um, kitchen window or whatever window they've got facing that development. So just trying to keep light down and off of adjacent commercial, or adjacent residential properties is the intent of this proposal.
Does this apply just to commercial?
Correct.
Yeah.
Craig, this applies on, what about that, uh, that issue where the people are building the pickleball court in the backyard and we're gonna?
That, uh, what was the deal of that? We can't regulate that.
Residential design standards. We're prohibited from implementing any residential design standards. And so our neighbors have taken the position, and, and I think we are as well, but I think there may be some argument there, but, uh, we've, the region has taken the position basically that, uh, implementing this kind of a regulation on houses would constitute a residential design standard that the state does not allow us to implement. So, uh, we're only doing this in terms of the commercial, that's why.
So those people that, in that particular situation, what is their remedy? Any, I mean, the neighbors?
Well, the, the remedy for them is if they've got a neighbor that's creating that kind of a nuisance for them is to, is to sue the neighbor if they, that, that they've always got that remedy. Now, that's outside the city, of course, but, um, I don't know that we were able, that the staff was able to look at anything that, uh, uh, regulated that because it was the kind of use that we, you know, allow outdoor, backdoor, backyard swimming pools, tennis, putting greens, that sort of thing we've allowed. I'll let Taylor, uh, expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we have supporting uses in the residential zone. Um, it's really common. We have putt putts, we have swimming pools, we have all kinds of things, but we did. Our code does allow us, um, to review greater land alterations, so we did review a grading and erosion control permit for that, and then a retaining wall because they had to retain the dirt that was cut. Um, but other than that, that was really the only two things that we could oversee in that specific instance. And we did. We applied our retaining wall and land alteration code to it.
Yeah, the, the guy who lives next door, he's renting it from his son, and he's like the twenty footer away. And he said the other day, it was the first time they turned the lights on, I woke him like right out of bed like lighting outside the house. Because it's that close, and they're just tall enough to make a difference.
You know, I'll, I'll just, they come to you because they want the city to do something about it, and, you know, unfortunately for these people, their remedy is not for the government to do it for them. I mean, they, some people have these individualized situations where their neighbor is creating a problem, there's no doubt about it. I mean, I'm not gonna say whether they win or not, but there's all sorts of potential civil remedies. Someone's gotta pay an attorney, I understand that's a, a thing for them. But, uh, we are talking about people that own property, and we're talking about all this sort of stuff, and so, um, they are not without anything they can do.
Yeah, with out-of-pocket money.
Okay. So just wanna side conversation on this. So we're talking about the situation with the pickleball court, which has been an issue, right? And now it is noise, and now we're talking about lighting. The lighting situation doesn't just exist in the situation with the pickleball court. There are other issues, you know, or, or examples, instances that I could, uh, cite, you know, from residents in the community have an issue with the next door neighborhood lighting. We had a situation over at Scottsdale Golf Course, it's across a golf course, and I know the people very well that live in a house next door to a house. Uh, the wife was at home a lot in the husband's long haul trucker, and they literally had a light outside. It was, you could land a plane by it, right? So I just wanna say that this, this issue doesn't exist just like at a pickleball court. It, it, there are other instances we could cite, and I think I brought that up at maybe adjacent one time, and we had exactly the same conversation we just had right now. So, you know, we get lighting complaints from other, other people as well.
Another example was on the east side, uh, not too far from your house, uh, lighting that somebody bought, rented a light from Carol Electric, and the neighbor complained that they wanted a dark neighborhood, and so this was interfering with their night sky.
Yeah, they couldn't sleep, they needed bigger curtains.
I mean, so it's not, it's not unique.
So Craig, you're kinda always on the cutting edge here of new things. Is there something in particular that brought lighting to your attention?
Well, that was the only thing that I was gonna say, was that kind of the thrust behind this. Um, I live, uh, on the north end of the Highlands, and every morning I drive by the storage units with the spotlights. That was the concern, and then the, a perfect example is the, uh, proposed ordinance or, yeah, ordinance, uh, item D, you know, rezoning residential into, uh, a commercial district. You know, that's, that's one thing that people talk about all the time is, you know, bringing revenue into the city, um, you know, and it's, it's gonna require that we develop commercial areas. With that in mind, this is just looking ahead, this is strictly to commercial only. We can't do anything about residential anything. So this always speaks to, uh, commercial lighting, and what this is gonna, hopefully what this is gonna, going to do is, is, uh, make everyone happy. This is just going to establish a framework for developers to adhere to, and it's, and it's nothing far-fetched. Uh, Taylor did a ton of research. Um, if you've read the packet, I mean, I think there's seventy plus pages of information that she's provided. Uh, this is not outside of the norm or the realm, like she said. Uh, other cities have very similar ordinances. Um, this doesn't require anything like specialized lighting or anything like that. It's, it's just a basic guideline, uh, and a framework that we as a community, uh, are just putting in place for development.
I'm just trying to think of commercial locations that would, right now that have, I seen the, the, uh, our leadership is not in the city, um, convenience stores and?
I think the things he saw that bothered him actually were in Jan, they were in Missouri, but it made him realize, hey.
That we didn't have anything.
If we don't make a rule, we'll have something like this.
Well, because that's, you know, the Dollar General thing, or I guess, I don't know if I should pinpoint them, but that brought, you know, that, that came to my mind that, you know, I'm not saying that they would, but they could, they could have any kind of lighting on those buildings, projecting outward, up, whatever. You know, this isn't a, this isn't a dark sky anything, it has nothing to do with any of that stuff. This is just a framework and basic requirements just for screening and downward projection of, of lighting.
Do we have any commercial locations that this would apply to? I mean, whatever their lighting is now, doesn't change?
This is for new developments, the projects that are, the properties that are now, they are what they are.
And I assume that redevelopment would be a part of this regulation too, would it not? Is this redevelopment?
Well, yeah, so redevelopment and light fixture replacements, if it's a commercial nonsense, like they would have to bring it, comply it, so they can modify. Um, it also offers the ability to just modify existing lights. You don't have to get a whole new light to replace it, just so long as you shield it and point it downward. Um, but yeah, any light fixture change would also be triggered on all existing commercial.
That's one, the last I can think of would be the Vasano's parking lot.
Sir.
I said about the only lights I can think of at the moment would be in the Vasano's parking lot.
What, they're too bright?
No, I don't know.
Sugar Creek's got.
You got a little sugar curry.
No, you probably.
Harps.
There's a light in the Metfield parking lot where the bikes are, that's terrible driving anywhere tonight.
But keep in mind, this is about things that don't exist yet.
I understand, but you know, we, 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 we picked and choose with, you know, the one guy knows the guy with the driveway, he's been there twenty years, and all of a sudden we're making him re-comply. So are we picking and choosing of the things we're gonna make an ordinance on and grandfather in, or things we're gonna make an ordinance on that's just from today? He had a problem with his SB two driveway. He'd been in the house for twenty years. He's been parking his car in the same spot where the guy before him parked his car, and all of a sudden out of the clear blue, they drove by, and he didn't have SB two. And we made him comply, which he did. But are we gonna go ahead and not gonna make these lights come in? So we're picking, you're okay, but this other guy who's been doing it long before, we're gonna make him change?
It's not exactly the same issue. You know, the, the, we're talking about new development, so we have every right as a city to determine the rules of Bella. And so that's what we're intending to do. When you're talking about various things that, for example, a grandfathered use or something, you're talking about people that, but the only thing we've, basically grandfather is use, and that is if you've been using a piece of property as residential, you can continue to do that even if the city were to rezonate commercial, as long as your use doesn't change your grandfather. That's the only example I can think of where we grandfather anything. People have talked about it all the time, but people think grandfathering is, oh, you pass a law that says I can't, that I can't jaywalk. That's fine, I lived here before, so I can jaywalk, but the new people can't jay, that's not what that means. So you can also have health, safety, and welfare regulations, and you can require people to comply with the law. Laws change, and they have to comply. They're choosing to wanna park cars in the yard. You know, they, they don't necessarily have to do that, but if you're saying if they wanna do that, then they have to put gravel down before they're allowed to do that. We can regulate where cars are placed. So it's, it's kind of a whole different set of rationale. I mean, why do we make a rule that, I mean, I know generally you're saying.
I know where you're going, and this, this guy's there so well, and he since passed away. But, you know, but.
I'm not making any comment about his particular situation, because I don't know it.
You know, that's what it seems like. You know, we're gonna make this, you're okay back here, but you're not okay here, and this other guy, well, you're not okay, but we made this, now we're gonna make you come up, so.
Well, I mean, for example, I mean, we, we can regulate parking on the street. Somebody's been allowed to park on that street forever, and now the city's erected assignment says no parking. Well, how, I mean, you know, the laws change, and so now he can't park on the street. And so it's, it's akin more to that than.
I got you.
And just clarify, this isn't, this isn't just creating an ordinance for the sake of?
No, I, I know what you're doing, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. This is just looking down the road as a community.
And I understand, I don't have any problem with what you're doing, none.
Okay.
So I have a question.
Sir.
Taylor. So we have, we're having a zoning analysis done, right? And we're gonna be presented, I guess, some of that here soon, right? Some of the findings or some of the recommendations, or at least some preliminary, right? And then as part of that, it includes design standards for commercial properties, right? Which, this could be a part of that, I don't know, I haven't seen it yet, could be, right?
It's already been called out that we are missing an important development standard, and they called out lighting.
Right, so we're, we're probably gonna see something on this in the not-too-distant future anyway, but I would, I would add, so again, we're looking forward, right? We're not looking back. Uh, coming in two seventy-nine from Hawassee, when they put the storage units in out there, so you're looking at the ones that are going out to, to seventy-one, right? Well, when they first put the new storage facilities out there, those lights were unbelievable, and I, for the people who live across the street, I felt really bad for them because they live there already, right? And now this comes along and blew their, no, there's no control. So ma- maybe not today, but I can certainly see a time in the future, I don't know if it's a distant future or a near future, when we will see development in Belavista, you know, under the current folks that have the, you know, could be driving some development. It's not happening right now, but maybe in not-too-distant future, it could. And when that possibility may unfold, we could very well wish we had some lighting controls in place, you know, if, if that does happen, because we don't want, you know, something that's just what you're describing coming up seventy-one, or even, I don't know, Lancashire or two seventy-nine or whatever. Uh, so going ahead and putting this in play now, because we don't know when something may unfold in the future, uh, we're gonna wish that we were taking this step forward and get a little bit ahead of it.
That's why.
Yeah.
It can be modified if there's recommendations from planning group when they come with a report, that we can add, detract, whatever, so. Uh, I, I've passed out a, a, a request, a proposal to do some additions and deletions from the, from the proposed draft, um, on the front page. As you go down the margins, you'll find a vertical line that shows that some addition or deletion has occurred. So that's a, a key, or catch your attention, there's something done here. Uh, the first one, which is under section two eighty-nine, point number one, uh, it's my error, I inserted a section there, took it out, and the word from is deleted, the word from should remain, it's my error. Uh, number two, I've added from improperly selected placed aimed, applied, maintained, shielded, outdoor lighting fixtures that, uh, to clarify and expand what the coverage would be.
Larry, shouldn't that be unshielded? If you, if the intent is to protect drivers, pedestrians, senior citizens, and visually impaired from the glare of non-vehicular light sources from.
Yeah.
Unsh, it should say unshielded, right?
Unshielded, yeah, I'm typing another one. Yeah, I typed in another one.
Can I, I mean, I, I apologize. I don't mean to like step on you, but because this was just in and out to us, what I like to do, this is a work section, right? I like to be able to like go home and sit down and go through these myself and compare them point by point.
Let me, let me give you a highlight of what's in here.
Okay.
The next, the next section on page one is addition of definitions. Not all of them are in this code, but they are, could be a part of a submiddle. So there's references in here to pit channels and, and a few other things, lumens, C C Ts, which is color, correlated color temperature. Uh, on the second page, um, in the middle, applicability, it, it adds discussion about maintenance, applicability of maintenance, applicability of non-conforming. Um, and then the next item is exemptions. I've added some exemptions to include the exemption of flag poles, the United States flag and the Arkansas flag. Um, and then going into page three, down near the bottom, um, I took out the word residential on adjacent residential properties, because it could be any property. It doesn't necessarily mean it's residential, it could be commercial as well. Uh, and then, uh, let's see, um, bottom of page three, there's really nothing there. And the top of page four, um... So that's, that's kind of it.
So how, so how's this gonna work? Are you, are you gonna, Greg's gonna modify it, or are we gonna vote on Craig's and this be an amendment?
It's literally rewriting, please. Oh, not rewriting, but adding to it.
Okay, so my suggestion would be, we've got the proposal that the Planning Commission recommended to you, that's in the draft, and that Larry used to be considered, potentially he'll move to amend to do various, maybe to substitute this, but it would be in the nature of an amendment. It would be, I think that would be the most orderly way to take care of it, the less confusing way. And that way you can have a full discussion on your proposals, and it could be a vote on your proposals, Larry, in terms of, you know, see, see where people stand.
On, on page four, the item that's there is operational searchlights for advertising in some areas, and it goes in a cycle of whether businesses who open up want to choose that searchlight thing. It's usually on for a couple of nights or maybe a week, it might even be for just a single night. And the question is whether we would accept that rather than prohibiting it is the question mark. In other words, it would, it would not be just blankly allowed, it would be processed through C D S and the planning department, allowing for it, like the permit, you know, but whether we allow it, disallow it completely, or allow it under certain conditions. So, it's a question. We don't have to deal with it now, we can leave it as it is, what the planning recommendations as they come forward allow for it. So...
I've noticed there's one change that I intended to make, and it'll be in the agenda for next week. And the Planning Commission actually discussed it on the, on the proposal in the agenda packet, on the very first section, one oh nine, two eighty-nine, subsection one, that should say protect residents by minimizing, not, protect, it should say protect the privacy of residents by minimizing, rather than property owners, because we, we don't care whether they own or rent, we wanted them to be protected, and that was just specifically discussed, and that, I need to make that change. So that'll be in your agenda pack.
I'm sorry, I had a question, which was...
On the very first page, uh, subsection one to the, two eighty-nine, section two eighty-nine, it says protect the privacy of property owners, it should say protect the privacy of residents. And that'll be reflected in the one that's in the agenda next week.
Thank you for noticing that. So the answer is this would be presented next week, and Larry could present an amendment. Then we'll proceed as usual. Any more on that topic, or you wanna move on?
We have a question.
Don't, don't violate freedom of information. Is that a test?
I can call. Okay.
You should go through the air.
Okay. I meant, I can call, but I had a question.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, if an ordinance amending chapter one oh seven subdivisions and other developments in code of ordinances, the city of Bella Vista to provide additional clarity regarding the intent and applicability of drainage permits in the drainage manual and for other purposes. Uh, Taylor, could you elaborate on this?
So this is kind of another housekeeping. Um, there were some words that are still pretty outdated in there that haven't been true to our current standards, it's C D S, such as referring us as the code enforcement office. Uh, so we went through and changed that to reflect community development services. Uh, we also are proposing to give staff more administrative authority when it comes to culvert material. That's really the, um, that's really the meat and potatoes of this change, is because right now there is no really administrative authority or any determination that our city engineer can make. It's all pretty strict in how it's written. However, other cities, actually, almost every single other, out of the big four city, allow their city, or site directors, allows their city engineer to defer, um, from case-by-case basis when it comes to type of corporate use, whether it's H D P E, or C N P, or H D T P, or any of those natures. So, um, basically, it still says, you know, that we would prefer C N P within the public right of way, um, in all times, however, that, that or the city engineer is able to administratively vary that on a case-by-case basis as needed. Um, this cleanup also involves cleaning up what is currently written versus what is currently practiced. Uh, I think since staff, you know, turnover interpretations have changed, and so we wanna make sure that what we're still currently practicing is in line with what we're interpreting. And so some changes need to be made, such as maintenance. Um, I believe the intent and previous staff that wrote this code was discussing our city maintenance team for culverts. However, now the new staff's here, we're not reading it the same way as the previous director when he wrote this, and so we would like to change that to meet our current interpretation and the current practice. Um, but other than that, you'll see that there are some changes proposed as well in the drainage manual, that's really all culvert, culvert material, and also basically noting red central driveways can be other materials, other than C N P, so long as the city engineer approves it. And then under city streets, same thing. Uh, those are really the two big things in the drainage manual, but the code is cleaning up interpretation and practice. Happy to take any questions.
Uh, for, uh, sake of laypeople, which we all are, uh, we're docking cement culverts and metal culverts for the most part, and, uh, there was quite a bit of internal discussion about this, and it represents, uh, a new era, I guess I'd say, of cooperation between the C D S and the, and planning and the street department. Uh, they were able to come together on a difficult issue and reach something that was okay for everybody. So basically, we're saying, uh, in the street, it will be cement or metal, and under driveways, people can continue to use metal, which they pretty much mostly have. So, any other questions?
Usually when we offer, uh, opportunities for options by the approving authority, you will get, if it's a cheaper alternative for the developer, or for the contractor, or for the project, it may not be a, a, a long-term benefit to the city, but it might be a cheaper alternative for the project and the project construction costs. They'll push to get the cheapest alternative. And so there's a, there's a risk of that allowance of variance in there. And so in some cases, you may want to hold the line and say, no, we don't allow any alternatives, even though we would like to, because once you've allowed the alternative, they will choose the cheaper alternative regardless of what it is. And it may not be in our best interest always.
Yeah, yeah.
And so when it's under our roadways, uh, it, it would seem to me that we would want the best quality and longevity that's possible for anything that's installed by the project, because that's our nickel to replace it. Our taxpayers' money to replace it, and so we want the development to pay for itself as it moves forward.
Yeah, we looked pretty hard at the roadway issue, and they, their thinking is to use cement in, uh, roads that are well-used, or there's some reason to use them, and there may be places where you have some little side road and it's one car a day that maybe you could use metal, but they're, I think they're, I know what you mean, everybody's always been pushed for the cheapest, and I think we...
If you have one car away, one car a day today, what are you going to have ultimately on that street is the bigger question.
I think we have, uh, some folks on staff that are preparing to be strict, that's my impression.
So how does this affect driveway coatings?
It affects all, all types of drainage structures.
All, all types, like the driveway up to your, to your house, it's got to be metal?
Well, it's got to be something that's within the code here.
The code could be, I don't have it in front of me, but the code could be, um, the, uh, plastic or...
Collagen?
Or plastic or whatever the...
H D P, plastic, or the metal, corrugated metal, are the three made of?
It's not really H D P E, it's a different plastic than that. It's not the black stuff, it's the gray stuff.
Holier-thin.
Yeah?
It is on our drainage manual, H D P E. I know a lot of other engineers use H D P P, but ours says H D P E.
People don't realize that you got the plastic or whatever that material is, and you've got leaves in your yard, and you get leaves in the culvert, and you set the leaves on fire to get rid of them, and there goes your culvert. Circle melt on you.
And then it's up to you to replace it.
You burn it down.
It's, it's your culvert, it's not the city's culvert, it's your culvert. The driveway culvert to any business or, or private home is up to the property owner's prerogative. Uh, even though it has to be built to a city standard, it's up to the property owner, whether it's a business or residential, to maintain that culvert. It's their, it's their ownership. The city only is giving them permission to put it there. And the state is giving you a permit, a written permit, if you wanna do a driveway on a state highway, or a county. So, but it's still yours, and you're responsible for it.
I think a simple example, what can go wrong is the, uh, I guess it's Chelsea Road, the westernmost Chelsea Road, they had a metal culvert, and it was completely underwater all the time. And it was, you know, that's why the road was closed down for so many months, they waited for the lake to draw down before they could fix it. It was as far gone as any culvert I've ever seen. There was almost no culvert left, because it was all metal, and it was underwater twenty-four hours a day.
So corrugated metal pipe comes with steel and different types of coatings. So the coatings provide the longevity and the cost.
This was probably put in before some of those coatings were even invented.
What is B O K or plausible to move K, L, and M up for G, H, and I?
Oh, sure.
For the people who are...
Okay.
Those reapportments.
Okay, sure. Uh, so, K is a resolution approving the mayor's reappointment of Doug Farner to the Bella Vista Planning Commission for a four-year term expiring March one, twenty twenty-eight. So Doug's term is expiring, and that's why this is up for another four-year term.
Mr. Farner has been a valuable member of the Bella Vista community and city government and P O A government, all forms of government for many years, and a person of influence on the Planning Commission. I think he should be reappointed.
Mr. Farner was one of the early council persons in Bella Vista, so he's had a long history. Long history.
So, uh, that'll be up for a vote at the next meeting. Uh, next one is L, approving the mayor's initial appointments to the Active Transportation Advisory Board. And, uh, this was a big task for, uh, Justin Falpepper and the staff, because we had something like thirty-seven applications. They came up with seven people and two youth. And, uh, if, I know some of the people are here, if you'd like the people that are here, you could stand up and, and say who you are, it might be nice if they were kind enough to show up.
Is this the seven that have been selected?
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, that's...
Two, two, two youths that are on there, there's one and one lady.
Yes. Hey, why don't you start in the lab, so I, we'll make the young lady go first.
Hi, my name is Jillian Johnson. Um, I'm in seventh grade, and I go to Washington Junior High. Um, I have been racing with NICA for two years. I recently just joined the O S team, and I've been coaching with bike school for almost a year now.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Derpinyan. And Jillian has more experience than I do. Moved here a year and a half ago, fell in love with our trails, made me healthier, and I've been a tap volunteer and with Pedal It Forward.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natasha Brand. I've been in Arkansas eleven years and seven of them in Bella Vista, and I've been involved with, um, active transportation in a lot of ways, in Bentonville originally with Bike Bentonville, the State Walk Bike Ped Coalition, and Bentonville Moves. Um, I worked for Imba and Fast, and I love to hike the trails as well, so just wanted to continue that in Bella Vista.
Where are you from?
England originally.
I'm Hannah O'Hai. I'm at Erstan Minus School. I'm in sixth grade. I'm on a bike club, I race for NICA, um, I'm in the student council, I'm an S C A leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Ely. I'm a professional engineer, been designing trails for about twenty years, so live here in Bella Vista most of that twenty years, and really gotten to enjoy the trails as they've developed over that timeframe with my kids and wife, so happy to be a part of the future.
Thank you.
Uh, Kristy Perry. I am thrilled, honored, delighted to be able to participate in the advisory board. I've been living in Bella Vista for about two years, and I'm more of a, sort of a behind-the-scenes person working, I've worked for elected officials and in nonprofit fundraising and communications for about twenty-five years, um, including some organizations that work on active transportation issues, so I, I really could not be more excited to be doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Wendy Taylor. I've been here in Bella Vista since two thousand and five. I am currently the, uh, marketing and outreach manager for N W A C and the bike and trail program. So we have a bicycle technician program and a trail technician program that I market for recruiting, and, um, I'm also the resident e-biker. I bike from Bella Vista here at Blowing Springs to N W A C once a week, so it's about a nine-mile one-way trip, so, and I'm excited to be on the board.
Thank you.
Kenny Williams, four-year Bella Vista resident, uh, lifelong active transportation commuter, and professionally, I, I run a local nonprofit called Pedal It Forward, uh, where we focus on getting bikes to people in need.
Thank you.
Years ago, my dad retired to Bella Vista for the golfing. I came to Bella Vista for the cycling. My name's Chris Stockman, and I'm a lifetime cycling enthusiast, and as a part of that, uh, for thirty years, I commuted by bicycle to my workplace in the suburbs of Chicago, so got a lot of little commuting experience. I'm retired now from a corporate job, but I'm really active in the community, volunteering for different things. I'm a part of the Trail Blazers Trail Adoption Program. I help out at Pedal It Forward, and I was on the Bella Vista Recreation Committee, uh, for five years, so I'm looking forward to kind of transcending from that to this Active Transportation Board.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Sounds like the committees did a great job in choosing good people.
Yeah, yeah, it's really...
The other elements were not qualified.
Yeah, I mean, if I hired Joyce for him, there was so many people interested, it's, it never ceases to amaze me, all the talent there is in Bella Vista, no matter what field you bring up, it's just astounding and really great. And it's great so many people are interested in being involved in the community.
Yeah. Will you go there anymore?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say thank you guys, you know, for volunteering. I mean, there have been times in committees, commissions, we have a, a difficult time filling the positions sometimes. We have to actually get out and beat the pavement to find people, and to find the enthusiasm for this is, it's really nice, and we really appreciate it a lot. So... So I could tell there's a lot of enthusiasm there as well. And thank you for the two younger people too, that's really cool, so thanks for being a part of it.
The official vote will be next Monday at 6:00 when they have their regular meeting, okay? So that'll be when the, what's my official?
6:30.
No, 6:00.
6:00 officially.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. M is a resolution approving the Bella Vista AMP Commission's appointment of Muriel Garza as an industry position commissioner for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2026 due to the resignation of Don Harris. Mr. Harris was a manager at Harps and I think Muriel might be here.
She is, she's right over here. All right, Muriel, just want to introduce yourself, yeah.
I'm Muriel Garza. I've been myself, my family's pretty plugged into the community, whether it be serving in our pharmacies, as a pharmacist, engaging in the schools, I'm a mom of small children, working on the trails or at the biking events, or even providing a fun experience for our tourists through our short-term rentals. So I'm super excited that you guys would even consider me for the AMP committee, I want to thank you guys for that. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you so much.
I was just gonna say, John, I actually met with Muriel for about 40 minutes today. I feel a little better, get a good chance to get us, to know us a little bit better and talk a little bit about the AMP Commission. Did you mention you had three short-term rentals here?
Short-term rentals.
Yeah, and we're kind of close to Huntley Lane, right?
Right, right on property, so off of Huntley.
Yeah, so and just so you'll know, it's a requirement that the AMP Commission considers candidates and have a conversation, we have to vote to approve, which we did, before it moved forward to the step for the final city council vote, so, yeah. All right? Thank you, Muriel.
Okay, let's go back to G. Ordinance requiring candidates for election to any municipal office, city, Bella Vista, in addition to any other requirement state law to file campaign contribution, expedition reports with the Bella Vista City Clerk in consideration for voters to make use of such information prior to the beginning of early voting and for other purposes. Doug, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak about this a little bit, Jason might have to help me out with a little of the legalities, but this is actually something that I don't understand why it hasn't already been written into the Arkansas state statutes. The voting timeframes have greatly changed, you know, over the last, I'm gonna say few cycles, you know, we moved into this early voting period and sometimes it can, you know, be not just a week, but two or three weeks in advance of the actual, you know, election day, election, election period. And right now, the campaign contribution form and expense sheet is not required to be submitted until 10 days before the general election. Well, you could already have two weeks of voting occur and just in, in the guise of transparency, I think it is only fair that candidates, you know, should reveal their sources of contributions and then how they spent that money prior to the, the general election before people actually start voting, because it definitely could influence how they vote in an election. And so we're speaking about this just here in Bella Vista, you know, specifically right now, but I'm, I'm aware, like Vanessa's too in Bentonville, when it was, people were made aware that was a particular council, candidate for, I believe it was for city council, when it was revealed where the sources of his contributions were coming from, it completely changed the complexion of that election. So I just think this is just a, to me, something that just makes sense. I had Jason research this for me to see if we could enact an ordinance like this, because there, again, there are Arkansas state statutes that, that give guidance to elections and he did that research for me and we do have room to be able to enact an, an ordinance such as this one. And quite frankly, I don't know why anyone really had an issue with it. You know, I mean, if, if you would have an issue with it, you have, you have to ask yourself, well, what does somebody have to hide that they may not want somebody to know? So, and I will tell you that local officials, elected officials are held to a very high standard when it comes to the dissemination of information amongst the body of the elected officials. And if anybody is familiar with the FOIA Freedom of Information Act, it's in effect here in Arkansas, it's probably the most strictest interpretation of this law in the United States. So I just think this kind of like falls hand in hand with the guidance that we receive as elected officials. So if anybody has any questions and wants to offer any comments, that's fine, or any questions of Jason's to our legal ability to be able to do that, so.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I just want to address the, address the legal issues here.
I mean, I will say, I think that there's a very good argument that the city has the authority to do this. As, when you, when you step out on the ice, when you may not, you may be the first one to do something, I guess that always brings a sense of, of discovery with it, as we know through other things that we've done, but the state law does particularly give us the right to do some things that I think maybe even go further than what the constitution would otherwise allow regarding limits on contributions and things of that nature. We are not prohibited from legislating in the area, so really the main authority for doing it is because we're not prohibited, the law is that we are allowed. So, you know, I'm, I'm in a, I, I try to be neutral when it comes to all of you at this table and what, because I know you all want to do things that others of you may not want to do, but I have to try to help you draft the things you want to do and then also answer the questions that all of you may have that may not be in favor of it. I, I just want you to know and full information, I did, you know, draft this for Doug, we've done everything we can, or I've done everything I can to make this something that will be legal and enforceable. As part of that work, I did reach out to municipal league to see if they knew of any other cities that had done anything like this. They were unaware of it. I also asked them to kind of, I was interested in their view on the legalities of, of the city doing this, you know, they've- communicated to me and which I've communicated to Doug, is that they said that if cities get into this, they would expect that the state would come in and either keep cities from getting into this or make changes to the rules to accommodate the concerns that have been expressed. And that, that's part of what gives rise to the resolution, you see it further down on the agenda here. So what this does is, to the same extent, basically using the same type of form that you do now, you've just got to file one of those with the city clerk, seven days-
10 days.
Excuse me, no later, well, hang on. No later than seven days prior to an early voting period. And then there's a, there's a 10-day, if there's a runoff and things of that nature. So doesn't change who has to file, so in other words, if you didn't raise enough to where you would even have to file a county report, you wouldn't have to file a city report either. So those exceptions are built in. And what has to be reported is the same that would have to be reported pursuant to state law on those forms. So that's what the draft is intended to do. You'll see, you know, there are a lot of whereas, 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 and that's just laying out various justifications and reasons that I know Mr. Fowler was concerned with, but also to potentially clear legal arguments against it. So that's what the, all that's about. The meat of it is on the second page, the, the three sections that are there and just, you know, we say, make clear in section three, this isn't a substitution for what you have to file with county, doesn't abrogate that, you still have to file with county what you have to file on their timetable, which is set by the state. That doesn't change by, during those timeframes, so, so make sure that's clear as well in the proposal, so that's my legal.
So it says, it says here, so it's changed in, it says here in sufficient time for voters to make use of such information, so that's been changed to seven and 10 days?
No, it's been changed to seven days prior to early voting, where right now you can have early voting at start, but the, the disclosure, the filing with the county would come after early voting had begun.
Well, 10 days prior to the general election is what's required now.
Yeah. And of course, early voting is about two weeks at least.
So it's filing the same thing only earlier.
I would, you know, I would tell you there is a lot of support for this and it's not like I have done a litmus test here recently with a lot of people, but after our last election cycle, you know, there was an article written in the Weekly Vista that I'm gonna say just kind of opened some people's eyes and people were asking, you know, they, they were not happy, quite frankly. Any person that I have mentioned this to since then, I have recently, it's just I haven't gone out and tried to survey 100 people, but the feedback is almost to a person is, it just makes sense, you know, I mean, why wouldn't you have people submit their campaign contribution and expense forms prior to the early voting? Why wouldn't, why would somebody have an issue with revealing, you know, where their funds are coming from, so.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the, with the Vista article, what was the crux of, what was it?
Well, it talked about one of our state senators here in Arkansas contributed money to local mayoral campaign through a PAC called Arkansas Wins, I believe is what it was called. And so anyway, it, it just mentioned that in that article.
The reality too is that local elections in Bella Vista, Northwest Arkansas, I think in total, Little Rock I believe, they, they have a party, I'm not sure, usually the huge cities in the states are, they're party affiliated, but we are non-political, nonpartisan elected, so we should have nonpartisan participation. One of the candidates that ran received a large donation from the Republican Party, I don't know about the Democrats, if there was any Democratic contribution.
Well, this is your nonpartisan, non-special interest, you know, driven by anyone, you know, group, people trying to influence the operations of the city.
Sorry, I have several questions. All right, so is there a penalty if you do not file?
Well, the way this is drafted, there's no unique penalty for it, well, we can't really ban someone from the ballot or, or do anything like that. This will be made a part of our city code theoretically. We do have a general penalty provision in our city code that would allow someone to be fined if they did not comply, so it would fall under the general fine provision if someone did not do that.
Okay, next question is, because we have to file with the city clerk, if there's a contested race for a city clerk, how would they work that out?
They would file it in their own office.
With other witnesses, I guess, or another-
Well, it just gets filed, I mean, there's-
Because it's weird.
It's, it's weird, I mean, you know, it's weird when you all have to vote on what you all get, pay yourselves, I mean, that, that gets weird too. But she's a city clerk and so right now she files a statement of financial interest and she probably fills it out and then sticks it over in her official records and it would be the same sort of thing with this.
Awesome. And, and it mentions that the candidate must file, but it doesn't mention like, could it, has it have to be the candidate or can it be a representative of the candidate?
Well-
In, in section one?
What if we have a financial committee?
Or, or your staff, or a friend, because you've been working nine to five and can't make it up to the office to drop off paperwork.
Well, I mean, it says the candidate must file, so, you know, if you want to allow candidate or candidate's representative, you could, that could be clarified in the draft and that may not be a bad idea, especially if someone's gonna, if campaign treasurer's gonna come and file it or something like that. Would you be open to me making that slight change before Monday?
Okay. If I remember correctly, I mean, our campaign contribution and expense reforms, they have to be notarized, right?
They do, but they be signed by-
Yeah, they're signed by the candidate and notarized.
Right, and then that, so we're actually acting just like what's set forth in the state statute, so the same requirement will be there, as long as it's signed and notarized by the candidate or representative?
Yeah.
Are the current ones filed with the city clerk or the county?
No, no, filed with the county.
So if this passed, you'd file with the city clerk such and such a time?
Few days later.
Then you'd file with the county, whatever's required.
Ten days prior to the general election right now.
But that's the official report for the state department.
And then, I know you mentioned, speaking to the A and L, do they have a position on this?
Officially, you know, they only take official positions when they vote in general at, at the conferences. Since you, I mean, Marquez, I emailed him and he gave a very short comment and he just said, I wouldn't get into that, is what he said.
So Larry, you said that the nonpartisan election and the Republican Party made a large contribution, is there something wrong with that?
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't suggest that there was, I'm only saying that we're, we're, we're candidates and we run nonpartisan, meaning we don't run as a Democrat, we don't run as a Republican, we don't run as an independent or a libertarian or whatever party you want to be affiliated with, we run as an individual.
Right.
And so we may be, and all of us certainly are, a Democrat, a Republican, a Libertarian, Independent, we are that by our own actions in our, when we go to vote for candidates that are party affiliated, which would be county, state, federal, that kind of thing. That I'm saying, that relative to us, in our local position, we, we are not affiliated with a party in, like after U, it doesn't say R after your name, or D, or L, or I, or whatever.
So I'm still, the question of what is the Republican Party making a contribution to a candidate got to do with it?
Maybe they like the candidate.
You can, there's nothing that, that bars or-
Nothing that prohibits it.
Prohibits anyone from accepting, accepting money from anyone. If there's an issue with it, that's going to be in the eyes of the beholder, right? All it is, is revealing where your, your campaign contributions are being sourced from.
Correct.
And then whoever wants to review that's campaign contributions or even how you spend the money, if they want to take issue with it, they can, and if they want to take issue, maybe they can, they can have a conversation with the candidate if they like. So, so you, this doesn't bar you from accepting any campaign contributions from anyone.
So you have a problem with the state senator making a contribution, what does that have to do? What's the-
I don't have a problem, he can make a contribution all he wants, that's fine, you know, he can-
I think he's saying, wanting to know like more transparency before early voting starts about where you're, because we're just close odds anyways, just doing it before early voting starts, moving, moving the timeline up just for Bella Vista municipal candidates.
Yep.
What, double standards for candidates?
No, 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 moving, moving the timeline up for municipal candidates in Bella Vista before, prior to early voting.
So this, whereas, a fully informed electorate, electorate is essential to the conducting of free and fair elections, which is compelling interest to the city of Bella Vista. Fully formed electorate. And as of when early voting starts, there have been no campaign contributions revealed, they are not fully informed. And what this ordinance does is takes a step toward a fully, ensuring a fully informed electorate. And so whenever anybody wants to receive one of these and they go through and see who made the contributions, they can deduce whatever they want to deduce from it. If they want to have an issue with campaign contributions from a Democratic Party or Republican Party or a particular PAC or a particular special interest group, I mean, you can take the money. Now whether somebody wants to have an issue with that, that's going to be up to them.
Up to the voter.
But I guarantee you could absolutely affect or impact what their vote may ultimately be, or who they vote for.
Don't look at me, I don't have a problem with it.
No, I'm not, I'm just looking in that direction, looking over your shoulder.
I think Wendy's got another question.
I have another follow-up question.
Yeah, Wendy, please.
I'd love to. So I know there's said there would be no penalty, but we could, are we gonna put a penalty?
Well, there's a, our general ordinance violation penalty in the code.
Could grill out. But we are not publishing these. Would there be, for people like, I'm thinking of like the Christian Hennings who spend maybe $300 on a campaign total, so obviously didn't have to file anything. If the- If the Weekly Vista was like, well, these candidates didn't file anything, is there an affidavit they can sign, or something they could produce?
Well, they, they're not filing anything with the county either, and they would be subject to that. I, you know, it could potentially say what you want it to say. But incorporated in this are the exceptions that the state currently provides for exceptions to filing with the county clerk, so it's no different. So whatever that issue is, they would adhere, they've already got that issue with the county.
And you can ask them, the candidate, you know, "Why didn't you file?"
I didn't raise any money, or I didn't, you know, I spent twenty bucks on Xerox copies or something.
If there was a piece in the piece, it's like, oh, these free candidates didn't file, it's like, well, I didn't, I didn't have to file, but we didn't ask.
But it's the same thing for the county, it's no different.
That's not reported, though?
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Yes.
They're not public. We say report, they're not, there's no, they don't print them in the newspaper. But I mean, they're on, they're a public record, and it was interested, and many people are, say, "I wanna see it."
I file everything.
There's nothing that says this is gonna be reported in the Weekly Vista either. But what it does is give our residents the ability to get in touch with our city clerk and request campaign contribution forms for public officials in the city of Bella Vista.
It's gonna make it available to the press as well.
And then there's this thing out there, I don't know if anybody knows this exists, it's called social media, that it will be talked about. And any candidate that doesn't spend up to the five hundred dollar threshold could very easily answer that question, if somebody wants to ask them. This doesn't change anything, all it does is move the...
It's an additional filing earlier.
Filing prior to early voting.
And if the candidate has their records up to date, then it's not a very big issue, except for running a copy and getting it notarized and turning it in.
So should we move along to H?
Yep.
I take it H is a resolution that you would send to state officials, wanting them to pass a state law that's the same as this ordinance?
Or similar to, you know, they can reword it or do something different. I don't know why they wouldn't want to do it. That doesn't, at this point, it doesn't make any sense to me that it's not already required.
It's all obvious.
Yeah, that could be. And you know, there could be people, and you know what, that had to be Republicans, didn't have to be Democrats, maybe they really like the way it is right now. They don't have to reveal their sources of campaign contributions until ten days before, or two weeks of early voting have already come and gone.
Well, it could be inertia, that's what the rule was.
Inertia.
Yeah, when things are a certain way, they stay that way.
Well, they stay that way, that could be too.
Nothing by that, not thought about one way or the other.
It's a question, when would that go into effect?
Oh, well, you've got, you know, three readings, so once it gets finally adopted, it's gonna be sixty days after it's...
February, March.
Be ready for the regular...
Three readings. Let's just say, February, March, April.
Final passage in April. You're looking at the end of June.
So it would be prior...
Prior to the man election.
Yes.
Assuming no tabling, assuming no delays. On the resolution, just to make, this is a resolution, it's basically making a request to the state legislature to change state law to require campaign contribution expenditure reports for municipal and local candidates be filed prior to the beginning of any early voting. So it, they're asking, you're asking the state to make a change so that we don't have this problem that you're talking about. And then we are also asking the municipal league to include in their legislative package for 2025 this change. So we're asking them as well to do that. Of course, you know, they adopt a legislative package, probably, I guess, in the summer they'll do that for next year. And then, thirdly, it is request the city clerk to send a copy to our legislative delegation, not all of them, just the ones who represent Bella Vista, our house members and Senate, state senate, and the governor, and Marques, the executive director at the league. That's what that does.
And then I, as a resolution, also on the same topic, expressing the opinion of city council, citizens should be highly vigilant regarding the influence of out-of-city campaign contributions during Bella Vista municipal elections. Did you want to elaborate on this?
Not elaborate, I mean, obviously, I didn't source just one person's campaign contribution form, I sourced everybody's, pretty much how I looked through it, and quite frankly, I was a little astounded at where some of the money came from. And I have to ask myself a question, why? And what was the purpose? You know? And then, you know, you see other things besides just from where the money's coming from, but you see, like, a group of people seem to be supporting each other, right? You gotta be wondering what's taking, taking place with those conversations, and is there some decisions that have already been made, that if they're elected, they're gonna do this, this, and this? No, no, can't say for sure, but it sure looks funny, you know? And if any, I'm not gonna sit here and go through person by person, or contribution by contribution, of what I saw, and I also researched some of the individuals and the PACs that made some of these contributions, and a little troubling to me, quite frankly. We are an independent body. We're neither Republican or Democrat. We make decisions for the residents of Bella Vista, and not, when you say not property owners, a property owner can be a resident, but a property owner is not always a resident. We make decisions for the general benefit and well-being of the people that live here. And that is what we should be thinking about, period. And I don't believe anyone should feel pressure to vote a certain way or make decisions in a certain manner, because they have received contributions from PAC, a person, a special interest group, or whatever, particularly if it comes from outside the city. This does not say that you cannot accept those contributions, that is solely up to you. All it says is, be mindful of what you're doing. If you're gonna accept it, you need to stay independent.
Well, it, it, just, you know, let me clarify, because the resolution itself is an expression of an opinion by the council. You all can express opinions about anything under the sun, but you're, if you adopt this resolution, you are expressing an opinion as a body that citizens should be highly vigilant regarding the influence of out-of-city campaign contributions during Bella Vista municipal elections. That's what it does. So it's, it's an opinion about how vigilant citizens should be. It doesn't adopt a rule or restrict anything.
You said you review these contributions, you found some things that were troubling, like, what, what are you talking about? What's...
Well, I mean, you can source the reports yourself, and you can go through it.
I mean, I haven't, don't particularly want to, I just wonder what you, what you found that found it troubling.
I found, you know, like, I guess, it's public document, anybody can read it. So, like, contribution from a gentleman named W. Ross Little, that doesn't live in Bella Vista, probably never scared our city limits, more than likely, lives in Springville, quite frankly, can't really locate exactly where his residence is, but his contribution, I think, almost went up to like the limit. Bobby Ballinger, right, son of Bobby Ballen, Bob Ballinger, who was a former Arkansas state senator, lives, I believe, in Combs, Arkansas, he's a contractor. A thousand dollars, you know, why is he contributing money to Bella Vista? You know? And again, I mentioned Arkansas Wind PAC, I think is what it was, you know, that's basically a PAC formed by Bart Hester, who's a state senator. He's a contractor developer, you know, making contribution of money. We had two city council candidates that were part of the contribution to the mayoral race, plus a city council member. And you go, you're just watching all this form and take place, you know what? I can't make absolute comments about what I think was going on, but I can sit there and go, hmm, what is going on here? So I'm just one person that lives here, but I can tell you that I'm not the only person that looks at this and goes, what's up? You know, why, why, this is unprecedented, you know, why is this, why is this happening? And you know what? There were a multitude of other people that made contributions too, and I have no idea who they are, they weren't very big contributions, and maybe they support the candidate, and that's fine, right? But in, in, in the guise of full disclosure, right, people need to see these documents before voting starts, and then they can make their own deductions or conclusions about what they think may be going on. If this is just, you know...
Well, you made an issue about a contribution that I made to a mayoral candidate.
Right.
But you didn't say anything about the contribution that I made to the sitting mayor.
Well, that could be anybody. I didn't, I'm not gonna go through every single person, every contribution. The Republican Party of Northwest Arkansas made a contribution to one of our, to a city council candidate. Northwest Arkansas Board of Realtors, they're very active in elections. You know, they call you up, or they contact you, and they don't even ask you when you can come down and have an interview with them to consider them making a contribution towards your campaign. They basically set a, set a time for you and say, this is, we want you to come and have a conversation with them. I guarantee you, for first-time candidates of city council positions that are not used to these type of things, they feel the pressure to go do that. They think, what if I don't go? Now what? You know, am I gonna get negative feedback about me not going? Right? I'm just saying, that all this is like going on, and people need to be made aware of it so they can make their own decisions.
Wendy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so I'm not sure where you're from, are you local here, born and raised?
Prior to Bella Vista?
Northwest Arkansas.
Being Texas, Ohio...
So I can, as the only native of Northwest Arkansas at this table, that's a surprise to me, I'm not sure, but...
No, I'm from Southeast Arkansas, that's a different world too.
My community goes outside the city borders. I've been here for thirty-nine, getting close to forty years, and my community is Fayetteville, it is Springdale, it is Robs, places where I've lived and built and established, and those people who support me, donate to my campaign happily and freely, know that by me being on city council, I can make Bella Vista better, and that makes Northwest Arkansas better as a whole. So I think it gets really dicey when we say, well, you strip out, or you start naming names, and, like, my cousin who lives in Portland, Oregon, like, who's also from Northwest Arkansas, but wasn't, she donated my campaign a lot of money, because she's a very kind and individual who believes in me and what I can do for this city to make it better. No, I'm not saying we should get rid of our AC units, like, they don't have AC in Portland, like, no, that's not influencing who I am. I think, yes, we need to be diligent about where campaign contributions come from, but Bellis is bigger than just the city borders. We have communities and ties, and also I think it's hard pressed that, like, as somebody who definitely needed campaign contributions, because if you don't know, running a campaign's expensive, and I ran a tight budget as I could, but it's expensive, there's signs, there's maybe a T-shirt, there's advertising on Facebook or social media, there's banners, or whatever you want to do, and it costs money. And as somebody who has a family of five, and personally would want a single income home, we cannot shell out the, I guess, four thousand dollars I think I raised for my campaign, out of pocket by ourselves, because we have other priorities, we have bills to pay. So, yeah, I needed help. I would absolutely call it that, I absolutely do the neighbor's realty thing, I think most people do go to that, because I didn't get it, kind of took my rental rights and what, that didn't really get me any favors, but, like, we go to it because you need those funds, but you don't be tied to the people that give them to you. People get freely, and I can accept freely, and I think saying that, like, it's outside of city limits, with thirty thousand people, like, it's hard, yes, sir.
Well, I was just gonna, I think we're getting outside of...
I know what you're intending to go about, yeah.
I don't think that this is trying to shine a spotlight on you, Wendy Hughes, the this or the that.
Oh, I know what you're trying to do.
Or you, Mr. Snow, the this or the that. I think what this, all this is illustrating, or suggesting, is that we make a requirement for the candidates, regardless of what they believe, or their background, whatever, it is just moving the goalpost to a, to a time prior to early voting. And all that is doing, is not, is not casting dispersion on anybody who takes one red cent from anybody, it is just giving information prior to the voting time, and it's providing transparency, and that's it.
Transparency, biggest fan of transparency, like, I've said, I am hardcore of FOIA, like, I am terrified of doing something wrong and going to jail. So I'm big on rules and following it, and like, all that, and I would love transparency, I actually don't mind moving it up the goalpost. I think the resolution's saying that, like, the out-of-city campaign contributions, because as a new resident, new residents, people who are younger in the community, you don't have thirty years of friends who have money to give you money.
And I, but that's, you know, but to your point, yeah, I've lived here for thirty, since eighty-six, so, yeah, so I mean, I've been here a while. So I understand what you're getting at, but that's what I mean, is that I, I don't think what this is even suggesting is that it's not trying to put the finger down on anybody, it's, it's just providing information.
It's not telling you you can't give money.
No.
You can give whatever you want.
Yeah, I mean, and that's what I mean, is that, and I don't think it would discourage anybody from running that has a PAC behind them or anything. I mean, all, all that this is suggesting is that just make sure everybody knows prior to when the election cycle starts. I mean, I think that's the point of it, is that you've always, and especially in this community, I mean, how many people turn out at early voting?
We do early voting in Bella Vista.
Oh, my gosh.
I think it's too, there's the, hey, getting the transparency out prior to the early, early voting, which I'm pretty good with, I think on it a little bit. Then there's that influence of out-of-city campaign contributions during the elections, and that's where my...
I understand what you're, I mean, I guess, you know, if you wanted to amend that to where it didn't say out of city.
So those outside Bella Vista seeking to influence the policy of city government for financial, business, or other purposes should not override the needs and desires of the citizen of Bella Vista. Doesn't say you can't accept them. And so if you're accepting money from your family, or...
Your uncle.
I think, what, you have PawPAC?
PawPAC, Progressive Arkansas Women.
Pretty nice, I don't know, it's a animal rescue or something like that, right? So if it is a family, I mean, you can simply put, you know, like, family, you know, I mean, you can notate, you know, where the money came from. But it's not telling you you can't accept, accept any funds, it's just like, just beware of accepting money, you know, in, in case it may influence you. But I'm saying, so, anyway, this is here, we have six people, it's a resolution, it's not an ordinance, it has to be read three times. You can sleep on it, if you want to amend it, that's fine, if you're gonna vote for it, fine, if you don't want to vote for it, then that's fine too, right? So if I want to leave it, and it's gonna be there, if somebody wants to make an amendment to it, to make it more palatable, you know, I'm all ears, I'm open to hearing.
It only makes contribution, contributors' information to a candidate available to the electorate before the early voting begins, so they're informed or can be informed.
Subsection I doesn't do that. Subsection I says, gee, I think you ought to think about this for your vote. It's like a million things you should think about for your vote, and for some reason, we're gonna make a resolution about one and not mention the other nine hundred and fifty-nine that you should think about. It's I.
Any way you look at it, whenever you make, and if, when you, if you make a contribution, someone makes a contribution to your campaign, my Uncle Joe that lives in Bulling, Billings, Montana, if he wants to make a contribution to my campaign, that puts him under scrutiny now.
It doesn't put him under scrutiny at all.
Heck, it doesn't.
It's public knowledge.
Just public knowledge, no matter where it came from.
Mr. Carr put me under, under scrutiny for making a contribution to a mayor's campaign.
It's public knowledge.
Public information.
It's public knowledge, there's no scrutiny there, anybody can dig it out. Anybody out here can dig out what you did.
But he didn't.
He's making, you're just making a point.
You know what?
Understand.
If you want to take the initiative and go down and look at the filed campaign contribution forms, you can do that, anyone can do that. John Kupublic can do that.
I don't know too.
Well, but that's your business.
That's up to you.
That's your prerogative. I think we beat this enough for one night.
You guys can think about...
Well, you know, that's my job, is when we get really carried away, let's go to the next one.
We need to debate at the meeting next week, we don't have, you know, I don't want information tonight, so.
Okay, let's see, on discussion, oh, we got Jay yet, there.
Then we're done.
I'm blaming Wendy for that.
What makes you?
Okay, Jay's a resolution adopting a revised planning application fee schedule. Do you want to... Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, the only change I'm proposing is the planned zoning district. Um, not sure why we did this a couple of years ago, but we set it as a TBD, like TBD determined. Um, no other city does that. Every other city has a set fee. It ranges from three fifty, seven hundred and twenty-five, eleven hundred and twenty-five, four hundred dollars. Um, it looks like Bentonville, basically they make their fee with the PZD or PUD is what they call it, planning the district, the same as the rezon, because it has to go through a rezon process, so that's the intent with that. So I just copied that and just, um, proposing to make our PZD application four hundred dollars just like our rezon application. That's all.
Is the only PZD we've ever had that placed by the country club?
The Dogwood.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty sixteen.
That was a very controversial rezon, if I recall.
Were you on the council then?
No, I was not. A citizen. The Cooper Development.
So that's the only change. Thank you for explaining that. Uh, I agree that it would be better to have a fee mentioned rather than TBD. Let's see, how much money do we need to save?
TBD determined. That's not good.
So thank you for going back and looking up when the last, uh, rates were posted. Appreciate that. That's, tells us that, uh, the earliest ones really go back to two thousand and nine and two thousand and fifteen. Those are some old rates and our costs of processing are certainly increasing.
A pleasure, of course, it's in. Uh, on discussion items, I'd like to do the second one first. Uh, Mercy Way budget adjustment that heads finance director Hall and CBS director Cap.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution similar to the one you all passed in twenty twenty-two showing what was spent and what was received just regarding Mercy Way. Uh, I passed, uh, handout out to everyone before the meeting started showing what we spent and what we have received. There was, the, the, the received column is pending a couple of reimbursements, pay up eighteen from the RDOT, and then we are expecting a final pay application, um, in the next month or so. Wrapping this up, um, in the bottom there, you can see the, uh, where they project we're gonna finish versus what our final contract, so we're still expecting to come in a touch under on that. Um, I mentioned in a previous meeting that, uh, to some of you that final punch list was done, you know, we were ribbon cutting final punch list, and during that, RDOT has found a couple of, uh, uh, cross grades that exceed ADA, and so, uh, we just received a proposal from our engineer, uh, that they received from Manhattan Road and Bridge. So over the next month, you're gonna see some minor repairs to the side, a couple of pieces of sidewalk out there, short section in front of CBS, a couple of sections across the street, a couple of sections on down underneath the bridge on the east side. So, uh, you'll see some contractors out there doing work on that. Uh, CBS driveway will not be closed, it'll be due in half in a time, but the trail across the bridge will have a short shutdown section of, uh, of time. And once we finalize those, I'll get those to Cassie and she can push those out to the public.
Okay, uh, but my understanding is that year twenty twenty-three is going to end on February twenty-nine, and Kim, did you want to say a few words about?
So thanks for the update on, on Mercy Way. The, the resolution is just a technicality for budget reporting. That's all we're doing is how much money did we spend in twenty twenty-three on the Mercy Way grant and how much money did we receive before the twenty-three budget closes on February twenty-ninth? That's all this resolution is. We do it every year. If we don't pass that resolution, then as, as, as Jason told me, we are, we are illegal on our budget. We have to have a number that appropriates revenue and appro, and, and approves the expenditure. Okay, so there's two separate things in this discussion, and one is just the budget resolution that we're trying to update and then the update that Doug provided. I want to just make sure they're differentiated for you.
Yeah, it, it was useful to see all these numbers, but, so Kim is gonna work with you to make sure the resolution's okay for next week?
Uh, I'm gonna do a resolution for next week, but I, I'm, uh, what you say is something we do every year. I'm, I'm, that's, I don't understand that one.
We did it in December of twenty-two and December of twenty-third, uh, twenty-one. It is just about closing.
About this one project or about all our capital projects?
No, it's just, um, it's just the items that are unbudgeted during the year. In other words, when twenty-two starts or twenty-three starts, we don't know what we're gonna spend for Mercy Way, right? We don't, we don't have any way of knowing that. We don't know how much is going to get submitted to RDOT for reimbursement, right? And we don't know how much we're gonna get back from RDOT. So rather than every year, what we, we just, uh, every year we just say, this is how much we got, this is how much, uh, we spent. So we know approximately, you know, we're, we're really close.
So on February twenty-ninth, we'll know because the year closes.
Right, but we are, we are guessing, and I think that's where Doug was going is it might be, the expenditures could be a little bit more, but, but if there, if the expenditures happen in twenty-four, then they will be in the twenty-four budget and we will do this when the project closes for twenty-four, right? And the same thing with the revenue. If we didn't get, um, in twenty-four, if we get, let's just say we get two hundred thousand dollars from RDOT reimbursing our expenses, uh, in twenty-four, then we'll do another budget adjustment to close the project out. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir?
The, the reality is, is that you said we don't know, but in reality, we have a budget that says we have this much we expect to spend, we have this much we expect to get in grant money, we have this much that we expect to get from wherever, um, and then we have the, the city share, and here's the total that we expect in the project for expenses and receipts, and it's got to balance.
Yes, so just, just to clarify, we have a project budget, right? We have a project budget, and let's just say that the project budget was eight million dollars. We spent, we know that in between, there was four million dollars, but these are all estimates, just make, made up numbers. Oh, I can't believe I said that out loud. Anyway, but, uh, we know that there was four thou, four million dollars left to spend. We just didn't know whether it would be spent in twenty-three or twenty-four, right? So at the end of the year, we gather up all those expenses and we do the final budget adjustment and say, okay, we spent this much money. So now we have to go make sure that our budget has an adjustment for that amount. The project budget was already approved.
I'll, I'll be doing this reconciling that year.
Bingo. That's what we're doing to the year. Does that better? I think that's a better explanation. Thank you for that. I think that's a better way of putting it.
It's a simple question. If we got expenditures of two million nine and revenue of two million three, that's six hundred thousand dollars someplace someone's gotta pay for, or we got it coming from somewhere?
That's, those have been applied for reimbursement. One has, we've not received.
And, and two, we're anticipating, those haven't been reimbursed yet.
One, one reimbursed.
Well, not exactly, uh, I cannot tell you that with a hundred percent cer, certainty because we got, uh, Walton, uh, money, right?
Correct, there's.
And so we have already recognized Walton money because we recognize the revenue when we get it, right? So there is going to be a difference. So, so there is a difference between, uh, you know, what we get, uh, from RDOT in the current year that we're looking at, twenty-three, versus what we spent in twenty-three. And some of that can still come in in twenty-four, right? So I think you said approximately a hundred and seventy-eight thousand is still expected.
Correct. The Waltons contributed our twenty, the city's twenty percent match on the program, which was in the neighborhood of one point seven million dollars.
But, but your numbers may say that we, we up front the cost because the money hasn't come from the grant, hasn't come from Walton Foundation. So we're putting in the money to finish the, the project to balance.
Waltons have already given us all their money. So that was been, that would have been recognized in the year it was given to us.
So even though it doesn't show, there's a difference here, that money's already there.
Yes. So what I'd suggest in, in, you know, uh, just as a kind of like a final project budget, when we do the final here in twenty-four, it might, it would be worth going through and saying, this is how much the total project cost us, this is what the Waltons contribute to RDOT, you know, at that point to do a final.
I, I don't want to stress this out. I know where I started, but I'm, I'm not. Here's my concern with, with it, and we adopted a twenty twenty-three budget that had expenses and revenues that have to balance. And what I'm hearing is we spent way more than we had in revenue, but, but we're getting the revenue now to put it back. I mean, even if we to put something, you know, we're gonna take it out of reserve for purposes of twenty twenty-three with the idea we're gonna get reimbursed in twenty twenty-four, I mean, at least it balances. But I'm not hearing, it sounds like we spent unappropriated money in twenty twenty-three. And I'm, that's, that's why my.
Well, that's not exactly correct.
Help me understand.
Okay.
Please.
When we, when we talked about this, Jason, because we did this last year as well, what we said was, is that we at any time can go back and adjust the prior year budget until the year closes. This is what we said.
Sure.
And that the project budget was approved. There's no doubt that the project budget was approved, we got grant money, we got, uh, uh, RDOT approves every expenditure. So all of that was approved, but the timing is the issue, just the timing of when it was exp, it spent. So now we're going back and we're saying, uh, in the twenty-three year, the twenty twenty-three budget year, this is what we did spend and this is what we did receive. That's all we're saying.
And we receive, have we received the money in twenty-three or have we received the money in twenty-four to apply to twenty-three? Have we gotten the money in hand?
Most of the money is so far, uh, it's, was received in twenty-three.
The, the money that gets billed in December, it's impossible to receive it, uh, because that's a many, many month process for them to approve that reimbursement, so that comes in later.
I'm not, I, I'm not a financial expert. I just, all I can talk about is the legal requirement that expenses be master of revenue and that they balance, and, and so I just, I don't, I, I'm just having, I was having a hard time understanding that, but I'm not gonna be the only one to understand it, so that's okay.
Does anybody else have any questions about it? Because it's just about saying, when we do our financial statements at the end of twenty-four, I, I'm sorry, when we do the audited financial statements that are, that we're doing the audit after, in March, okay, for twenty-three. So if we don't approve a budget adjustment for twenty-three, then we will have spent, what is it, two point nine million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we will have spent two point nine million dollars that we didn't do a specific budget adjustment for.
That we had not prior approval?
Well, we had prior approval because the project was approved, but we didn't allocate that two point nine to the twenty-three. That's all we're doing.
Approving the project is not the same as approving the budget.
That's right. That's right. That's exactly what I'm saying. So we now have to approve it in the year it was spent.
So what's, what's happening? Is there a way, can you, I mean, can't you just sit down and talk about this when you get back in office tomorrow?
Yeah, it'd be good.
And show them, because this.
Okay, uh, I'm in need of, Jason, you need?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. You know, if the council were saying, that's fine.
Well, I know what she's doing, but she threw out something.
So many different numbers and so many different scenarios, now it's got.
It's blown up.
Lost, right? But I understand the bottom line, what you're doing, because we've done it many times. Now, whether it's legal or not, I don't know, but I know what you're doing.
Well, you told me it was, it would be not, we would not be legally compliant if we didn't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next discussion item is yard waste committee and a viable option for yard waste mitigation. Council member Hughes.
Just super fast and simple. We used to have a yard waste committee. For whatever reason, it got disbanded, defunct. I wanted to, um, see you guys were okay bringing it back, um, with the focus of the committee being options for yard waste mitigation, including developers who are clear, um, cutting and burning, um, debris, um, finding viable options that the city could provide or other angles to help get rid of that.
Knock yourself out.
Yeah.
What?
The reason it got disbanded was because there was all kinds of ideas, but none of them were financially viable.
Yeah.
Uh, you couldn't, the city couldn't afford it or it wouldn't work.
Absolutely. I would love to like make, hop back in and see what we can do to, because.
Are you focused on the, on the developer side of it or all of it?
All of it. Um, I've had feedback from both. It started because I got a lovely conversation with a citizen who, um, like if you also read on social media all the time, people were complaining about a few things, but one of them being, um, about the burning and development and the fires, you know, constant fear and worry and the air quality, um, and so that's been a big part of it. But also people is not having options for composting or other options, um, for their own personal yard waste residential, so kind of like a pool of composting.
Sure.
Yeah.
Big problem is there's no place to take it.
And maybe some, some options we could figure out and sort out, um.
Well, there is. You can, you can contract for a yard waste pickup, uh, which happens from April first to November thirty, thirtieth, and every time during those nine months, uh, they pick up once a week and you can have as many units as you want.
And that's be a one, one, one option, but you can, you can get together, have a little brain trust, just like sit and focus and only focus like on these issues.
And so I don't have a, a holler to blow them into, so I have to do.
Don't do that. Don't blow them to a holler.
Well, I'm saying that.
That is, that's for.
You should buy the lot next door and use it.
Well, I came to a half.
Cassie has great tips on yard waste mitigation. She, especially around Earth Day, she always puts out, it's beautiful, it's lovely.
She just put it out here again last week?
She did, and do not blow them to a holler. That's bad news bears. But, uh, if y'all are agreeable, I'd love to have that come back and, um, find people in the commit and, and the, uh, it may seem Taylor would be willing to help with this at all, um, as like a person who knows a lot of things. Um, but also, um, some citizens who are being very, um.
Jerry, I, I'd like to suggest something about this. Uh, you know, I went to a couple of meetings when you had a group before, and if you could give her the names of some of those people, because you had some really knowledgeable people on there that were involved in the business.
I'd love to reach out and see.
Kind of like herding cats, though.
Yeah, I just remember there were people, one guy that had to do with the Bentonville, uh, disposal, and, I mean, he had people from the county and whatnot that really do things.
He lives in Bella Vista, too.
Yeah, so if you have any information you had or former members, I would love to reach out to them.
I just thought I'd don't forget going, you know.
The ball rolling.
You got those to those you get sent.
Oh, yeah?
I think.
Or you can do it in German.
Yeah, that sounds good. We're German. Thank you for your patience.